Session. Debbie, there any people waiting to get in?
Yes, can you just give me one second? I just have to.
Yeah, and I'll apologize to them when they, when we get there. Okay, so we have a few phones. So Gary, David, and Neil are the three amigos who joined us. Just want to apologize. Our executive session did run over and I'm sorry. We don't really have a good way of flagging and saying we'll be along in a little bit, but thank you for your patience. We are, we have adjourned our executive session. We are now going to continue on. We have some minutes, Lynn, regular session meetings minutes.
Yeah, a motion to approve the minutes of select board meeting held on Monday, July 27, 2020.
Is there a second?
That's as presented, right?
As presented.
Do you get a second?
We have three seconds, actually.
Okay, good. Then one, two, three. So any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, vote, voight. Boyd?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Marshall?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
John?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. On now to the traffic advisory committee and I will hand this over. Kevin, I'm not sure whether I hand it to you or hand it to Neil, but take it away.
I'll kick off and then we'll tag team it and in getting more detail. So one of the things that obviously is is great concern for the community of Topsfield is traffic flow, speeding, proper signage, et cetera. And we currently have a traffic advisory board that's made up of our police chief and our highway superintendent, who have done tremendous work in trying to address the issues that have been in front of them since they started in their respective positions. Chief Hubby's held a couple of neighborhood meetings to discuss a couple of Camp Meeting Road and Wenham Road, discussing with the neighbors their concerns. Both Gary and myself were present for that as well. And one of the things as we've talked through, these, these issues is trying to find a more robust way to look at these problems and try to create solutions and, and also to involve more, more people in the conversation. Well, because when it comes to traffic, any decision we make could have a ripple effect and it's a, it's a precedent that we set as a community. And we want to make sure, and I say we, Chief, Gary, myself, when a recommendation on a traffic treatment is brought forward, that all angles have been thought through and that the board feels very comfortable with, with, with any recommendation. I know you already feel that way because the work that the chief and Gary do, but the thought is that we'd like to discuss the opportunity to expand that advisory committee. And Chief Hubby did a fantastic job after a couple of conversations him and I had on putting the writing, some concepts and ideas on what that committee could look like if we wanted to pursue that additional body members. And I will hand it over to, to Chief to maybe walk through what you put together, Chief, with the select board if you could.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the town administrators stated that honestly, I really want to develop a more formalized process that allows for transparency and consistency when we evaluate any of the traffic complaints, concerns, or projects in the town. It's going extremely well with the communications between Superintendent Wilds and the town administrator and myself. I think we've made a lot of progress in the short period of time that we've all been involved in this in our positions. As Kevin stated, that I have held two public meetings with the residents, nine residents of Camp Meeting Road, and also six residents on Wenham Road with grave concerns about the safety, well-being of their, of their children and of their neighbors and themselves on those roadways. But what I'm concerned about is that we really don't, other than Gary and I and the town administrator communicating and then reporting back to the select board, I just, I'm concerned about the transparency and the consistency. We have 117 roadways in the town of Topsfield. We have, we've identified that there are three roadways that have illegal or not authorized posted speed limits on those streets. And that we've done a lot of legwork to evaluate and actually have gathered a lot of data at this time. Right now I'm working on 11 projects that residents have contacted me about their concerns. We also have the other projects that we deal with continuously with the shared streets, complete streets, chapter 90 jobs, and also the revitalization that we have to evaluate the safety and the sightlines of all of these projects. I'm also looking at gathering more information to bring to the town administrator and the select board regarding the chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016, which has to do with a proposal of a 25 mile an hour zone statutory requirement in the, in the town of Topsfield at some point in time. But I really wanted to, I took some time and I put together this proposal as a recommendation. It is a, it's a draft. The first draft where everybody's viewing, but what it does is it really formalized, the formalizes the process of how we take a complaint in, how we evaluate it. We have residents, I propose that we have two residents, town administrator, a select board member. We don't really have a town engineer, but we know Greg Crum is an engineer. So he was voluntold that he would be on this committee and that we would really look at the connectivity of sidewalks, the traffic patterns, any projects that are going forward. We're looking at speed complaints, concerns about the truck traffic and the condition of our roads. So I try to get as comprehensive as possible and I'm looking for the input of the select board members to actually move something forward. So we do have some consistency because I have grave concerns about, you know, Pine Street. Now, most of my phone calls that I receive is they want the same treatment as those residents on that road to on their road. And it's not something that we can make every roadway a prohibitive way in the town of Topsfield. So I open it up for questions.
I'm just, I'll make a statement that I, I agree wholeheartedly with everything you're trying to do. I have a question. What was that word that you used to try to recruit Greg to the, to the group?
He was a voluntold.
That's what, that's what I thought you said. The only comment I would make is that you wind up with a fairly large committee. And I think there's some people around that would say the bigger the committees get, the harder it's going to get and be to get anything done. But that's about the only comment I would make. You've done a good job and, and at that point I'm going to sit back and let you do your thing. Good job, Neil.
Mr. Jackson, I share your same concerns. It's a lot easier just calling Gary Wilds, going out there, evaluating that, reporting back to the town administrator.
Yeah, but then that's at the other end of the scale. That's, that's too small.
It is a concern and stuff, you know, the more people get involved, the more opinions you're going to have and the longer the process is going on, on to make decisions. But I also think it's important that we're very transparent in what we are doing and that everybody is informed and everybody has some input. So I'm willing to, you know, make some sort of concession. I proposed nine, you know, I like to have four or five, but I also took a look at that all the, you know, probably the, you know, the makeup of the committee, we needed to have every aspect viewed equally.
You got my support.
The committee is big, but there's a surprisingly lot of emotion when it comes to these things. And so.
That's understandable.
Representative is what being big eventually gets you. It would be hard for anyone to argue that different opinions weren't heard, obviously the bigger the group is.
Chief, any ideas on your part as to how you would select the two members of the community?
I would probably leave that up to the town administrator that we would put a public posting out to solicit. We would evaluate that. I've already had two people come forward that have heard about this and have met with me. So Nancy Luther would like to get back on a traffic advisory board and Mr. Muse from Camp Meeting, which was on the traffic advisory board many, many years ago. They have expressed, but I would, I would really want to open it up. And I think that's part of the discussion at some point in time if we move forward is how we would select the proper applicants. But I, I think it would be a posting, but I, I would defer this to the town administrator of what he would think would be more appropriate for that.
I think that, um, thank you, Chief, for that. Um, you know, if we can, if we, we have some incredibly talented people in our community, people who actually probably possess some expertise in the matter. I know for a fact that we have a couple of Mass DOT residents at least who live in our community. Someone like that would be a really great fit because they have a wealth of knowledge and experience that they can offer to the committee. So someone like that would be a great person that we'd love to tap and identify. So I think part of it is, is listening and talking with you folks, people who are leaders in our community, who've been here a little bit longer than myself personally, to see if there's anyone you might know. Like I said, I know a couple of people at the top that Mass DOT backgrounds that we might look to as well. But then it would be a formal posting process and then brought to you folks for the appointment purposes.
Yeah, I think a really important piece of this, and I really appreciate this, Chief, members of the community. You know, they're, you know, we being treated fair, they being treated fair. As we all know, when you sit in the seat where you have to make decisions and so on, they become very complex in those ways. And we've been accused of a lack of transparency in the past. I think this effort to make what was never intended to be a hidden process, but make it more intentionally transparent and functionally transparent is in service to the community. There are not so many of these issues that this is going to become a board totally overwhelmed. My guess is there'll be two or three issues a year and they'll wrestle with them for quite a while each.
Chief, you mentioned a couple of things. One is that there are some illegal speed signs in the town. Could you elaborate?
Yes.
But what do you mean by them and why?
So at some point in time of the, and I, and I can't, I don't have a date of when they were put up, but you know, they're on Kinsman Circle. 15 miles an hour was never approved or authorized by the board. Line Brook Road was, there's a posted speed limit there. There's 25 that was never approved or authorized by the select board. And also the, on Wenham Road, there's multiple postings of 30 and 20 that was, has never been approved and authorized by the select board. So technically, those speed limits are not enforceable. If there was ever an incident that took place or if we stopped the person exceeding that speed limit that was not authorized by the select board under our bylaws, the whole case could, could be removed from the courts.
So there's the official speed limit signs and then there are the yellow speed limit signs.
These are official appearing white with black lettering. They have nothing to do with the yellow ones. The yellow ones.
They're all right with you. The yellow ones are still okay. You're not referring to those.
I am not referring to those. Those are, those are warnings. They're not enforceable. They just, they were deterrent.
You're saying that some resident at some point decided to take matters into their own hand and throw up a speed limit?
Maybe Gary.
Should I jump in? I can jump in, Neil. In past decades, what has happened in conjunction with the police department, and this was many moons and these are in place, many of which have been there for 20 years or more. Previous successors to Neil would just take complaints and they would go put stop, excuse me, speed limit signs in different locations where they felt a need, a problem needed to be addressed. So it was never done necessarily properly. They would grab a highway worker with a police officer. They would go put signs. The highway worker will put signs where the police department would tell them in years past. This is longstanding, unfortunately. It's just getting to these standards now of MUTC standards, you, they have to be signed off on. They have to be in a particular place. And they have to be in the exact place. They cannot be moved just because. And this is what's happened over time. And we find ourselves now where these things technically are unenforceable. And to Neil's greater point, where there was traffic stop that might result in speed, but could be a greater crime, if you will, could be lost because that probable cause would not be viable in court because of this.
Well, I, I'd just like to clarify a point as well. As I recall, the town of Topsfield does not necessarily have the ability to decide what the speed limit ought to be on a particular street. That's governed, I believe, by state law, is it not, Neil?
That is correct. It's based upon the state coming in doing an assessment. It's also based upon the statutory requirements of a house is greater than 200 feet apart on any given road, the densely populated area, then, you know, then the state dictates on a nonposted road. What we can do is petition the state for posted speed lines, signs and then, or we can petition the board that we, you know, based upon the statutory requirements of getting a posted sign. We only have 22 streets in all of Topsfield out of the 117 that have posted speed limits on them.
But the one thing we can't do is go out and put up our own speed limit sign.
Chief, I think this is a great idea. The, the thing that I think is especially helpful to the citizens, the residents, is that when these issues were brought before, they would be in and amongst an agenda of the select board. And so people may or may not have to watch the entire meeting to get to a particular issue. This way, they can specifically just tune in to this particular committee to see the issues that are of concern to them. So it's much easier for them to have access to this information and to, you know, stay current on it. So I think it's a great idea.
Chief, you mentioned also an item, something to the effect of 25 mile per hour and something about an act in Topsfield. What was that about?
So in 2016, the governor signed an act on November 7, 2016, that enables a community to petition the state to make all roadways within their community that are not posted to be automatically 25 miles an hour. So I am in the process of putting together the paperwork to bring this forward to the town administrator for his review. And there's many other communities that have done this. Newbury Port has done this. Beverly has done this. Ipswich has done this. So I've been in communications with the town of Ipswich and Newbury Port to, to work collectively. So we're using the same templates to get approval. But I, I really think that would be a huge benefit to the town. Automatically, all we would have to do is erect like nine point of entries that says that this town, all streets not posted are automatically 25 miles an hour. Therefore, it just diminishes that thought process in the, in what people are confused about and what an actual speed limit is. And it would just be townwide 25 miles an hour other than the 22 streets that have legal postings. That would not change those.
And I also just piggyback up that for a second. The, the, the townwide 25 mile per hour is ability to do that is the Municipal Modernization Act passed by Governor Baker a handful of years ago. And there are certain qualifications like the glissedor, settled business districts, school districts, et cetera, that are involved in the processes of doing that. But as the chief's point, Beverly did do it. I was actually on the front lines with it. So it works out really well and it was pretty successful. So.
Because the default right now is 30, right? So this would pair another five off of that.
Thirty, right?
Now, the, the default is not always because it's the, you look at Salem Road, pretty much of a cut through country road. The default there is based upon the statutory requirements as the houses are greater than 200 feet apart. So that one defaults to 40 miles an hour. So on all of these roadways, you realistically, you know, have to take a look at the distance between the houses to go with a speed limit.
Well, I can tell you that the moment this committee becomes into existence, my neighbors and I will bring our particular road to, to your attention. Look forward to its creation.
They'll be.
Volunteer my driveway as a speed trap. I'm happy to do that as well.
So you'll be number street 12.
Chief, within the, the text here, it includes the word speeding motorists. Let me read the whole thing. To have transparent process in evaluating traffic circulation concerns, intersection configuration, speeding motorists, parking management, et cetera. I, I would suggest we take the word speeding motorists out in the sense that that is controlled by state law as to what represents a speeding motorist. I'm not sure that we want a committee. Maybe you have some other thoughts about it, but it, it just, it doesn't feel like a safe thing to have in there.
As I said, this is a, a draft and this is the biggest complaint in Topsfield, as we've probably all recognized, is speeding motorists or the perception of a speeding motorist. You know, we have a lot of data. We have a speed spy radar system that we hang on the pole. We have some very egregious speeds. I have data that shows Buxford Road coming into Topsfield's cars exceeding 70 miles an hour. You know, I have Wenham Road that is a terrifying street that is a country road that cars are going 50 plus miles an hour. So I'm just using language that is common. So.
But the point I'm making.
Any words in there?
But the, the speeding is taken care of by state law. If it's posted at a certain thing, then anybody goes over that speed limit, you deal with it the way you deal with the state law. We're not doing anything different from what state law and that committee is not going to make any decisions as to how to do traffic enforcement or speeding enforcement, rather. That, that's not part of what the committee is going to do.
You don't think that there are strategies around finding ways?
You don't find? I'd like to point out that, for instance, I've observed two, well, not accidents, but altercations that I, one I thought was going to turn to fisticuffs at Avril Street Extension. That's the kind of a thing I think the traffic committee should look at whether trucks should be excluded from that short section because they're so wide. That is not a speeding thing. That's not controlled by the state, but we could make a determination in town, I presume, to decide we didn't want to allow trucks through. So that'd be a case where this would be important.
And I do think that there are probably strategies around finding ways to encourage people not to speed, to find ways to kind of decrease these roads that are being used as raceways and find a way to discourage that. So I think that's what we're talking about.
Kevin?
There is also the possibility of performing speed studies to ask from the state to assess, to help with any determination if there should be different speeds. And that can be originated, the request from the local level. So if it appears that a road is improperly marked, we could certainly take steps to have that conversation around the motor speeding. So I just throw that out there as sort of.
I mean, I, I use an example as Washington Street past Masco. I know that you guys were out there speed trapping fairly consistently over a number of weeks. And as somebody who uses that road every day, at least twice a day, I feel like speeds are now down. You didn't change any signs. You didn't enforce it really any differently. You made your presence known and I think it now has a lasting impression on people that has probably slowed the speeds that people drive down that road because now they're wary of one of your guys sitting there on the side of the road.
I think there's a, probably a fine line between what the committee would do and what you would do, Chief, as being responsible for various areas of safety in the town. So I'm not sure this committee is going to do your job or, or try to step in and do things that you would naturally be doing. But that one of speeding motor vehicles, I would say volume of traffic and speeding cars was the issue on Pine Street. And I think that's probably an issue that a number of residents, probably Camp Meeting, that's their major complaint. So I would see that definitely being something that the committee would be addressing. So I, I think it should stay in. Maybe it's the wording of it.
And I think it's, the committee's role would be more identifying it, right? You know, identifying these particular roads that we may not be aware have speeding issues. And then eventually we become incumbent upon the police department to enforce whatever changes. But the committee would serve very well to ID the roads.
And that is great.
I, I, I think that those words ought to stay in there because I would guess that a huge number, huge percentage of your complaints are going to be revolving around speeding issues.
And the majority of them are all about is speeding. That's how they come in. And then like on Camp Meeting, it was very interesting. This has been a 29 year problem. I, I actually have data that was the first request and a petition made by the residents 29 years ago. And what we did was with all of our data, they realized that it's not a speeding car issue any longer. It's a volume and it's a, and it's trucks going down there. So what a person's perception of has really changed because of the material that we've been able to share with them, the transparency, having an open discussion, a meeting with them. So it's actually, we made a lot of progress with the residents there. And they've somewhat acknowledged that it's not as much of a speeding as if this is a volume and a, and vehicle size going down their road. Cause they're, they're having about 8,000 cars a week going down Camp Meeting Road as a couple of them.
So for next steps on this, this is a draft as the chief mentioned. I have some, some thoughts too about, you know, for instance, some of the work impacts of development on traffic flow, et cetera. If there's a project that were to come up so that the, the traffic advisory could take a look at that as well. There's some tweaks that Chief and I have talked through that I did not incorporate. I wanted everyone to see this. Sort of it's an original form. Chief, like I said, did a fantastic job on it. But I guess I would, is it maybe appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if I, I ask that the, the board maybe provide any feedback back to us in writing so that we can incorporate that in another draft and then distribute that out for a future meeting to discuss further and then hopefully come to a point where we can vote?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be very good. This is one of those things we'd sort of like to get right. And this is one of those things, importance exceeds urgency. Let's, we want to take the time to do it in the way that's going to work best. So I would suggest, I would ask that the board members reflect on any aspects of the proposal that's put forth by the chief and return those comments and questions to the town administrator. Kevin, if you collect those, if there are questions, I'd ask that you bring them up as an agenda item in a future meeting and let's go over them together because some of us may have questions. The others would be worth hearing. And at some point, let's put a revised draft out, maybe in the next several weeks and see whether that is at that point close enough that we would be able to take action as a board in establishing this traffic advisory committee.
So if it's all right, I'll ask that if the board could provide that feedback by September 1st, then the chief and I can incorporate it and we'll distribute that out to everybody thereafter for, and then put it on the agenda.
That'd be great. Kevin, I also think this is going to be really helpful with the downtown revitalization because there are things with the parking management and directional signage, having all those hands on deck and the different perspectives will be really helpful.
Absolutely too. Crosswalks, for example, we talked about crosswalks a couple of weeks ago. This would be a great place for us to discuss. Are they located in our places? Do we want to tweak anything? So yeah, absolutely.
Good. Any other questions or comments on this?
Nice job, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. That was great.
Good job.
Yeah, Neil, thanks very much. I think this is a great thing and I appreciate the effort you put into thinking about it. I appreciate the breadth. It's always better to start broadly. If we decide to restrict scope, fine, but this is definitely the way to approach it and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So looking now at discussion of new committees. Kevin, do you want to?
Sure. So there are, I'm just going to go very high level on this only because, you know, we have another area where this could be incorporated into at the next agenda item about our visioning and priorities. But one of the things we talked about, actually before COVID started to become a, an everyday and all our item in our, in our, in our operations was expanding a couple of committees. One of them was the ECDC, the Economic and Community. One of them was the ECDC, the Economic and Community Development Committee, which would help support the downtown revitalization, Route 1, other commercial areas, places of business, et cetera. Another one we had talked about was a sustainability advisory group. Might be called a clean energy advisory group or other. And I want to introduce a new concept as well to the board, which is I'd like to have a conversation in the future. That's here about a public art advisory committee. I think that there's some fantastic artists in our community and we have a real opportunity to tap the talent in our community and create some interesting and exciting new places that we can share that art here in Topsfield. I've already spoken with the library and the possibility of doing something out there. I could see this being expanded to other locations as well to possibly help with the downtown revitalization, but also other places too that we deem fit. Very, very preliminary, but just something I wanted to put out on the table for for the board to to sort of consider and think through. I've looked at a couple of other communities and what they've they've done. It's it's really just getting the right people to help support that effort. There's already some really great ideas Laura at the library and I were just brainstorming months ago and again recently about how we could incorporate art into the downtown and in by the library specifically. One of the issues is it really takes some time and commitment to do it right. And if we got some great people in our community who are passionate about art to help support that and build the infrastructure we need so that we can have prolonged art opportunities for all ages, for that matter, out in our community, I think that'd be a wonderful thing to discuss and maybe pursue. It's the purview of the committee or the select board.
So that, for example, would be modeled after something that Ipswich or Gloucester or somebody would have as a start?
I would, I always like to, I don't try to reinvent the wheel unless I need to. So look at where it's been successful in other communities. It's it's everywhere. The Greenway in Boston has an art advisory committee and they've done a fantastic job in creating some really interesting and dynamic art in their green space, making it interesting, making it a destination for a lot of people to go see what's happening there. A lot of communities, I want to do a little research, a lot of communities out west, California specifically, have these advisory committees. And I think it would be something that we would look locally as well. I know Beverly was talking about it recently, doing something of this nature, to have an advisory group for for public art. And some other communities have had the discussions as well. So yes, we would look at the other communities first and build from there.
And this is to put it on public property?
Ideally, yes. That's what I, the intent would be that it would be areas of land that we control or we partner with someone who on private property, obtain the rights to to use the space for a period of time, if it makes sense, and put it there. But I think primarily, at least off the beginning, I'd try to identify public spaces that make sense first, using the committee's expertise to help us identify that. And then if we need to expand beyond that, we could take a look. It's certainly easier if it's on public property, though. So with that, I I think this can kind of parlay into the next conversation around the visioning. Those are just a few things I want to just put on the table to work session, you know, things I've been thinking about, things hopefully that you folks can, you know, reflect on. I can, if there's anything that's a nonstarter, please let me know now. I'll stop spending the time to pursue.
Kevin, just one question on the this ECDC. The last time that we, as you said, we just started to discuss it, but Martha Morrison showed some interest in in having a discussion relative to the role of this committee versus her planning organization. Have you had any subsequent conversations with Martha?
I haven't yet, to be frank. It's just hasn't, I wanted to make sure I came to you folks first and just mentioned, you know, there's in a package of three of the committees that, two of which we previously discussed and one of which I wanted to put on the table for consideration at some point. But no, I have, that would absolutely be a next step. And we, I've had a really, and you, Vice Chair, you know, because you've been on the calls as well with regards to some of the work we've been doing with Stan Tech and making sure that Martha was part of the conversation and her feedback's been incredibly helpful and appreciated. So would absolutely want to make sure that she's, she would be the next person to discuss this with, without a doubt.
Okay, great. Thanks.
But I think something like this Economic Community Development Committee, there's a charter for it. I'm not sure that the citizens of the town as a whole would, so to speak, agree with the charter. Charter talks about a greater economic opportunity. Not sure what that means to the citizens of Topsfield, but okay. Add additional, add affordable housing to the downtown. I'm not sure that a lot of people were really looking forward to doing something like that. I'm not sure that's part of what the average representative here in town or resident here in town would think of. We know that we're doing some things with trees and we're getting people writing back to us about their desire to have a bucolic Topsfield that is not like the town that they've come from. I'm not sure how well affordable housing downtown fits that. And generally approve the overall experience downtown, okay, for those living here, okay, for the residents somehow. But for people visiting Topsfield, I'm not sure that we want to spend a lot of effort trying to make Topsfield friendly to visitors as much as we do to the residents themselves. Now, it doesn't have to be all residents. We certainly like to have people from Buxford come here and things like that. There are assisted communities, but I'm not sure that we're looking for people from around the United States visiting us any more than they do already to see places like Parson Capen House. But these are things that are in the one sentence charter. And I'm not sure that that fulfills what the average resident of Topsfield is interested in.
Well, this, Dick, it actually builds upon all of the work that was done with the downtown revitalization undertaking and the town meeting where we got input from people and the online surveys and the feedback. And this was the general consensus coming out of there. This was what was presented to us as input. So I think in talking about, you know, flushing out the work of this group and what we're going to do for goals and objectives, we have to dive in now. This was at the, you know, 30,000 foot level when we came out of the downtown revitalization. We have to dive down now and see what does that actually mean and what are the implications for that? That's the next step. Like, for instance, the affordable housing would mean potentially, could we have the, you know, village shopping center turned into something that is three stories with apartments on the top floor, one or two bedroom apartments on the top floor and then some retail and, you know, offices and then on the bottom, some interesting shops. So, you know, that would be the affordable housing that was being talked about is apartments where seniors could live or people just graduating from school could find a place that's a, you know, affordable with a nice apartment, similar to the Steve Misses Building on the corner. There are, you know, places in there that are more affordable for people to live in, but they're nice. They fit in with the feel of the downtown. So I think we now have to start to do that deep dive. Just making this statement is not enough. You have to flush out what that means.
I didn't know that the survey showed overwhelming interest in creating affordable housing. And again, there's
It showed, it showed interest?
Housing and regular rental, whether it's affordable or otherwise. The state has pretty strong rules about what represents affordable housing.
Yeah, I think in general, there was interest.
Survey and from what I saw, had an overwhelming interest in us creating a lot of affordable housing in the downtown.
I think what we saw was there was interest and then there were a lot of people who said, I need to know more. And that's what we have to do. We have to dig down so that they can understand what that means.
Dick, I would say that affordable housing
Add affordable housing.
Dick, affordable
This is very expansive. Go ahead.
Yeah, affordable housing, keep in mind that there are specific definitions in terms of law. For a lot of folks that I certainly talked with many dozens of them when we had our our open house and affordable for a lot of people meant, oh, maybe I could afford to stay here and live in Topsfield. It meant affordable to them. And I think that's the spirit in which we took it, not in terms of 40Bs or anything like that. All of us are a little shell shocked about what 40B could mean and so on. But affordable means creating a variety of housing stock. We're currently, we lack quality affordable housing, affordable to residents now who would like to be able to stay but can't afford to move to Great Hill or similar.
Affordable housing, a lot of times too, you can do a certain percentage and not, you know, it could be 12% affordable housing and, you know.
None of this has been decided yet.
What you typically see though is a percentage of the average median income. And, you know, in the North Shore, average median income is is a good amount. And what I've seen historically that if you look at 80% AMI, you're looking at workforce housing, you're looking at police officers, firefighters, teachers, people who are committing themselves to communities in Topsfield or other communities who would typically qualify. And, you know, it could be in the $60,000 a year range, maybe a little bit higher even, depending on what that AMI looks like. So, you know, affordable can be a lot of different things, mean a lot. But just from getting a sense for what what one sort of sense of what affordable could mean.
And just a quick thought on the experience of those who are visiting Topsfield. One of the things that we heard from the businesses is they would love more people to be coming into town to frequent their business. So how do we attract people? What experiences might we offer that they could come see a show or a concert and then grab a bite to eat? Or maybe, you know, if we get a restaurant dinner at night. So it's it's making it as profitable as possible for businesses to come and and have their business in Topsfield.
So I would say we'll eventually have our own different people that we run with and talk to. And I will say that in my ever widening social circles, this all speaks very much to what people want. In a more vibrant downtown with more things to do that not only gives us as residents of Topsfield something in the downtown that doesn't turn dark and empty at 6 o'clock at night, but it also, let's not forget, an enhanced commercial tax base means that we can finally address property taxes. And I think that's what this is about as well. So I don't discount that there are many people in town who may not be interested in this, but I'd ask that you not discount that there are, in fact, many people in town who are very interested in this.
Essentially, you're interested in more traffic in town? Is that what you're saying?
Interested in more businesses in town and a downtown that services more than, you know, the hours of nine to five. Because we don't have anything in downtown that is open beyond a certain point. And if I want to go get dinner, if I want to do something at night, I have really no choice but to leave town to do it. And there are a lot of people who live here who would like to do that inside of town, who would like to have that restaurant where they could go and meet with neighbors and friends in town and not have to go to Danvers or Ipswich or some other place. Yes, they are interested in that.
And bringing in more people in town. That's why I'm saying traffic, not just for the residents and the Buxford people and that.
Yes, yes.
People from outside and around.
Yes.
Increase that traffic. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't really catch that in the surveys, but that may be the case.
I think a lot of that came out, Dick, with the the businesses themselves. When we had the roundtables with the business owners, a lot of that came out. And I think at least in the the big meeting that we had, a lot of people said that they would love to be able to bring their families downtown to meet people and do activities and have it be very exciting and vibrant. And to Marshall's point, that's something that they could do in the evening as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the residents have an objection to having a place that they can go and have a good time downtown. I think that we've seen that with, quote, what was the bagel shop, what is the Whoopi Pie shop? That absolutely they're very successful that way. But I'm not sure that the most residents are interested in trying to increase the visitors to the town and the traffic in the town, but maybe that's the case. I doubt it, but maybe that is the case. But certainly to have a place that you could take the family for dinner, that would be great.
I also think there's a realistic
That's great.
A realistic acknowledgement that if you want a restaurant in town, the people of Topsfield aren't enough to support a restaurant. And if I'm opening up a restaurant, I'm going to need people from outside of town to support that. Otherwise, it's not going to survive.
So I'd like to, at this point, say obviously there is some lot of discussion here. What we're aiming for with goals, year and a half ago, two years ago, with Mark at the lead, we started a process, and I say started because we made a really good faith effort. And I think we were sort of trying to figure out how to frame it. An effort that I would like to see us continue, which is to set some town goals and priorities. We get criticized from time to time and not having a long term vision. We're not only responsible for making sure that the money is spent correctly and that we are being responsible to the citizens and so on. But ultimately, as someone once said, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. And we would like to have some sense of places we would like to go. I mean figurative places. And the way to do that is to create some town goals and priorities. There are definitely, they're definitely open for discussion. And Dick, as you mentioned about, you know, developing downtown and economic development, well, there may be necessarily a very important discussion to have on what that might look like and what it might not want to look like. But what I would ask the board to do is over the next week or two, we didn't get a chance last year with Mark's passing and the change of leadership in the town hall to really engage in doing this, but we'd like to do it this year to think about what we would like to see as town goals and priorities. This is distinct from, but not in place of what we may talk with Kevin about in terms of town administrator responsibilities and so on. This is as a town as a whole. And it is essentially a declaration of where we, the leaders, the elected leaders of the town, believe we should be helping the town move and learn more about, develop and create and make happen as best we can. My own feeling is that if we come up with some really, really great ideas and nobody likes them, they should not reelect us because that's not what they want. But we need to give somebody something other than just our names and good looks as a reason for believing that the town has a future. And this is our opportunity as part of a public process to think about what in town matters that we would like to make a town goal or priority. I would encourage each of us to talk to people outside the board. This is not just a closely held process. And David, you're it on the outside folks right now. But certainly those who are sitting outside, not on the board, I think we need to be open to ideas in general. And over the course of the next few months, couple of months, I hope, see whether we can begin to winnow those down to frame a few key priorities we believe in. We have in the past set up downtown revitalization as one of those priorities and goals. Maybe we look at it again, it certainly would need to be continued as a goal if we want to. But those are the kinds of things and the example of the level that we want to do. Transparency and communication and operation of town functions has been a goal. We're working hard on that and Kevin knows the number of times we've said, let's make sure everybody knows. And we've really been trying to do that. Those are two priorities that we had, which probably we need to continue doing. But there may very well be other ones in terms of keeping Topsfield the kind of town we want it to stay, but helping it grow into the kind of town we want it to become. Because we're not going to stay in one place. That's not unfortunately an option. So I'd like to ask each of us to think carefully, come up with something, no format necessary. Submit these, please, through Debbie. And I will ask when they've come in, I will ask Debbie or Kevin to collate them and put them out. And we will publish a process for having a chance to have some working session discussions on which are worth pursuing, which we want to and which we say, nice, but we can't have everything be a priority at once. Does that make sense?
I'd like to chime in. It makes sense to me perfectly. Having gone through the interview process for our potential town administrators and with Kevin specifically, I was excited about the fact that we may have a town administrator now that we can actually depend on running the day to day operation of our town government, which in my opinion eliminates the select board being involved in minute uh, being involved in minute details every day of the week. Uh, and, and it seems to me it's going to evolve. It should evolve in my opinion to a situation whereby the select board should be thinking about where we want the town to be two years from now, five years from now, and ten years from now. And when we put together this list of goals and objectives, it isn't necessarily, in my opinion, the kind of stuff that needs to be done in two weeks or a month or six months or even next year, okay? It's stuff that we should be working toward and trying to get succeeding members of the select board to work in that direction and to make this town uh, a better town in a lot of ways than it is already.
Um, Kevin, I'd be interested um, to get your feedback from talking with the department heads on two of the goals that we had before. One was operational efficiencies and the other was um, really technology to support that. Um, as well as this concept of um, how do we manage going forward on a sustainable basis? Facilities, for instance, we talked about, you know, whether that's regional or the tech support is regional. Um, so getting your input on, on that from your department heads on what might be priorities and what you've uncovered in talking with other departments, et cetera, that'd be helpful to the conversation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And um, we, we did our, I think we've more formalized our evaluation process this year, which we wrapped up um, about a month or so ago. And we were able to get some really great honest feedback. When you're one-on-one, uh, you have a really great chance to sort of debrief and peel back the onion, I guess. Um, so um, certainly can incorporate some of the um, discussion points that came out of that. Um, IT is always, it's the backbone of what we do. Um, at the end of the day, from an organizational standpoint. Um, and we're always looking for ways to, to push that envelope. Part of the IT is how can we leverage that for, for better transparency and better communication? Um, I know Mr. Hook and I have had discussions on that. Mr. Spencer's, Chairman Spencer as well. And others, so you know, there's, there's, I certainly, when we, I don't know if you want me to get any deeper into it right now, uh, Vice Chair, I can, or we can, I can certainly get, kind of pull all that information together for the next time we sit down as well, but um. No, we've had, we've had some really great um, conversations from an operational standpoint on how we're doing and we've started to move in that direction. Um, on a, on a number of fronts, um, which is great, so anyway, thank you for pointing that.
I, I agree with Lynn on that. Go through what we had actually as goals the last time and review our goals. You mentioned a few of them right there, Lynn. Uh, is to see how we've achieved against those and maybe add some to that or say, oh, we didn't get too well on this one, let's make sure we do it more or let's drop it. I, I think it's one of the places to say how, how good a job we have done or we still need to do from, based on the, the past. That's good.
Excellent. So um, that's leaving everyone with a charge. And um, Kevin, you suggested by September first for the first round here?
Um, I was, I, I know that for the traffic advisory, it asked for comments.
That's, that's the traffic advisory, yeah. Yeah, I think as we get talking and new things are going to come in, I'd like to have a first draft um, available. Today's the twentieth. Maybe sort of in that same frame, get at least some, you know, any ideas that are sort of on your mind, you're really particularly interested, concerned about. Um, this is not a job to be done as quickly as possible. It's to be done with as much thought as possible, so. Um, I expect we will probably have at least a couple of uh, working sessions to try and come up with at least a working list for twenty twenty-one.
Brainstorming, as you might point out, when people have ideas and they come together and you feed on each other's ideas to improve and come up with the best set of uh, goals. But again, I would suggest that we kind of start with our goals. You have a copy of our goals from the past, don't you, Kevin?
I'm actually have the two thousand twenty in front of me right now, yes.
You have them?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. And, and so I think that's a good place to start as to how we achieved against those and any of those that we want to continue to work on or drop or whatever the case may be, and all new ones. Absolutely, yeah.
Um, Debbie, can I ask a question of you? When's our next work session? I know there's one scheduled in September. Do you have the exact date?
Yep, um, September twenty-fourth.
So uh, Mr. Chairman, maybe if we wanted to say uh, you know, comments off of the two twenty, we can send out the two thousand twenty version to the, to the board. Um, and if you want to send back feedback on priorities that you'd like us to, to pull together, um, kind of, it's a random day.
I think, I think we should run it out a little bit. Maybe we could say um, Wednesday the ninth, get any, you know, first pass at ideas. We'll pass it around. I'll emphasize that we'll pass it around, but it will not be for discussion. Um, but just to think about what others say. Um, some of the ideas I've come up with were not ones that were mine to start with. I just said, that's great and wanted to push it. And I think we may benefit from each other's ideas. Um, maybe we should commit the twenty-fourth if we can to doing um, a deeper discussion on this as a starting point.
If you are able to get me um, your feedback by maybe, I don't know, the eighteenth of September, um, we can pull all that together ahead of our meeting on the twenty-fourth, because we'll be posting that on the twenty-second. Um, for the, on Board Docs. You know, maybe
Kevin, I want to do more time to people think about it. I'd like to move it a week ahead. I don't want to have just two days to read and think.
Oh, I see what you're saying, sure. So um, you, you mentioned the ninth. Did you want to have that due back to us on the ninth and we'll distribute it?
Yeah, something like that, so that it could be turned around by the end of that week. If it was the ninth, then it could be turned around either, Debbie, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but either by the eleventh or the beginning of the week following. That gives over a week for each of us to kind of reflect on what's there and um, my inclination would be to include the ideas. We'll take a look, but probably include them without attribution. It'll just be kind of a shopping list of ideas, different levels of thinking and so on. But to prepare us for having a session about, you know, what's important, what's not important on the twenty-fourth.
Because if I had, um, if, if I had a preference, it would be to get my initial list in on the earlier side, like, you know, in two weeks and then have more time to mull once I see the whole list. Um, that I think would give me more time for a robust discussion when we get together on the twenty-fourth, so. I don't know if everybody needs more than two weeks to put together a first draft. But I, I would say no later than the ninth. That's almost three weeks to put together a first draft.
We could do it earlier. The door will not close on new ideas. I want to emphasize, if this is just to get us started, I think we'll probably end up with a bunch of them. And it's to feed the discussion, so.
Yeah, I just want to give Deb enough time so that then she can get it out to us and we have enough time to actually mull over the combined list, that's.
How about, any problem with the second or with the fourth or something like that? You tell me what works for you.
Tonight, I already know what I, what I'm here to do, so.
Yeah, I can put mine out. I'll do mine on the next, I'll do this this weekend probably.
Yeah, I can do mine quickly too.
So maybe the end of next week?
Interestingly, John, you suggested that we wind up talking with various people around town for their ideas. And so this may not be so much just goals, it may be concerns or whatever that people have that lead to goals that we may come up with. But I, 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 I think that's a great idea. Solicit from the people what they like and what they perhaps don't like or want changed. Or it all may be the speed limits on streets.
Well, and I'm hoping we'll pick some, um, some, some sort of bigger goals that will define the character and flavor and feeling of the town. Um, not just tactical things. Um, the, the purpose of this is to provide some strategic direction to the town. Um, things like traffic committee and so on, I see as more tactical, but we'll wrestle with that when we start coming up with the list that we want to do. I imagine a list of three or four primary goals that we look at, that's, we're going to do with the rest of our business, but these are things that we're going to keep mind share on going forward. And it should not be a top-down process. It should be across the board and invite folks to help us.
Is September fourth doable for everybody to, a little over two weeks?
Yep.
And it would give Deb some days in the following week and that would give us two weeks to review?
Of course, yep.
I could come up with something.
If you submit them on the fourth, I think Debbie and I will speak, we will work together on it, but you know, we can have it out to you by the ninth. I think that's reasonable.
Yep, and, and Kevin, I'm going to ask that um, when this gets distributed, it not be um, digested or homogenized. Um, so that uh, even though there may be sort of different levels and so on, we just kind of put it all in the mixer and um, we'll, we'll pick the stones out of the salad as we go through. Let's, let's make it as open as possible so that um, we're not being restrictive. Later on, we'll have to make decisions. We can't do ten things as a first priority, but let's deal with that when we get further down the road. We may find this a real consensus on ones, we may find there's not, but we'll figure it out. So that was it on that for me. Is there um, uh, that was the twenty twenty-one goals and objectives and as Boyd put so eloquently, it's certainly looking beyond just twenty twenty-one, but it's something we want to start thinking about in twenty twenty-one. Is there anything else before um, we have a motion to adjourn? Supper time's coming. Do I hear a motion? Okay, I hear a motion for Boyd and I hear a second from Marshall. Um, so uh, I'll take a roll call vote. Lynn?
Hi.
Marshall?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Boyd?
Hi.
And John, myself. I, it passes unanimously. The meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Night, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.